All right, thank you very much, Jason. Thank you very much. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting for Thursday, July 3rd. I'm going to call our meeting to order. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest? Not seeing any. Deputy Mayor Yankov, Chair of this committee, is online with us this evening, so I'm just going to take her spot. Can I have someone approve our agenda for tonight? Moved by Bobby, seconded by Paul. All those in favor of the approval? Deputy Mayor?
In favor.
Good, thank you. Next is to adopt the minutes from our Planning Board meeting on the 3rd of June, so I need someone to move that. Moved by Councilor Beck, seconded by Paul Conley. All those in favor? Any business arising from those minutes? Not seeing any, we'll move right in. We have two reports tonight. Both are variances. The first one is regarding Six Irvin Drive, PID 684696. And Sonya, you're going to present this report.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and respected members of the board. This is a request to deny the major variance to allow for an appointment-based home occupation to accommodate an online grocery business at Six Irvin Drive, PID number 684696. The subject property is a single detached house with a double garage. It is located on an interior lot adjacent to Irvin Drive in the single detached residential R1L zone and is found approximately 30 meters west of Malpec Road. Surrounding properties consist of single detached residential R1L zoned lands with a senior care facility to the north. Lands to the north and south of the property are within the institutional zone. In accordance with Section 3.9 of the zoning and development bylaw, on June 9, 2025, written notification was sent to property owners located within 100 meter of the subject property. A total of 16 letters were sent to residents advising them of the application to solicit comments and feedback. One response opposing the proposal was received till 4:00 PM on June 23, 2025. One letter of opposition arrived after the deadline. These are the floor plans. Section 5.9.3G of zoning and development bylaw outlines regulations for home occupations and states that additional uses, including uses with appointments typically based on an hourly basis or as scheduled, may be considered following the process of review for a major variance. Section 5.9.1K states that maximum number of clients permitted on the premise of appointment-based home occupation at any one time will be determined by council. Additionally, as per Section 46.1.7, the required parking will be left to discretion of council for appointment-based home occupation. Section 5.9.4D of zoning and development bylaw states that a retail store is prohibited as home occupation. Even though the business is proposed to be appointment-based, it falls under the definition of grocery store, as according to the bylaw, grocery store means a retail store which primarily sells foods as well as other convenience and household goods, whereas retail store means an establishment for the retail sale or rental of merchandise, including hardware from within an enclosed building. This definition may include supplementary postal services, film processing, repair of merchandise sold or rented by the store or food consumption area not exceeding 20% of the gross floor area. So until deadline, administration received one letter of opposition citing concerns including increased traffic and parking cognition in the area not designed for commercial use concerning the safety of children playing outside, noise and disruptions from the deliveries and customer visits particularly during evenings and weekends. Approving such a use sets a precedent that could undermine the residential character of the neighborhood, and presence of commercial activity may negatively affect property values and deter future home buyers. So the Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to council that the following major variance for the subject property addressed at Six Irvin Drive, PID number 684696, be denied to allow for an appointment-based home occupation to accommodate an online grocery business. Thank you, this is the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Do I have any questions from anybody?
It's an appointment-based online business, so if it's online, then there should be online delivery options. Why there is a need for an appointment?
Because the nature of the business, through the chair, because the nature of the business was described by the applicant, that there will be pickups and there will be deliveries of goods.
Okay, thank you.
Delivery of goods probably more than the Amazon guy throwing the package, then?
Applicant has mentioned that the delivery will be once a month, and per day maximum delivery will be five pickups, and yeah.
Thank you for clarifying. Any other questions from anybody? Deputy Mayor, do you have any questions?
No, it's pretty straightforward. I think it's a dangerous precedent that I'll be supporting staff's recommendation.
Okay, thank you. So do I have someone to move the motion? Okay, just give me a second. Go ahead, Jackie.
I was just wondering, like, I don't know, I think that this location actually makes sense, and it seems like light use, but I understand the definitions of grocery store versus retail store. Is there a world where you could see that the word merchandise could be, could include food products?
Through the chair, again, as retail is absolutely prohibited in the premises, in any way, this falls under retail.
Did you want to say something quickly? I know we normally don't do this, but we can allow you to speak for a moment. Come up to the microphone, dear, and just push the button, please.
What is the intent of the bylaw?
Oh, can you provide your name?
Rob Michael.
Rob Michael.
I'm speaking for a dad who is trying to open up-
You're asking, what is the intent of our bylaw that doesn't allow people to have home-based businesses in community residential areas? Is that what you're asking?
Retail.
Retail business in a community, like in a residential area?
You can open up a barber shop, you can open up a hair salon, you can open up a tattoo parlor. Right?
I think they have to do the same process as who you're speaking for before they open any home-based business?
No, it's not retail. It's not retail.
I don't know.
My point is this. I think this bylaw is inconsistent with the direction the city's taking right now, in terms of growth, and I'll tell you why. If you look, I'll give you some examples. Apartment buildings. We're putting up massive apartment buildings in residential neighborhoods. I would expect the reason why they don't allow retail is because of traffic, possibly. Is that the reason?
I'm going to let you ask your questions, then I'm going to let staff answer them.
Okay. So, so my thing is, we're putting apartment buildings in residential neighborhoods, we're allowing homeowners to bring in or allow rentals in their house to up to, what, three different renters? So you're going to have massive congestion in driveways and so on. But the thing is with this bylaw, I think it's out of date. If you look around Charlotown and you throw a rock from any, from many retail places, you're-
Mr. Michael, I'm just going to ask you to stick to the actual application that's in front of us tonight, rather than getting into our bylaw discussion?
Well, it has an effect on the bylaw.
Okay, but we also, I mean, we've given, we don't normally typically have people speak on behalf of applicants on an application at a planning board meeting, but if you'd, if you'd like to kind of sum up something in particular about the application?
Okay, okay, well, okay. The application is in line with the neighborhood hubs that are coming. Neighborhood hubs are retail areas. I live in Beech Grove, I've been told that North River Road is going to have neighborhood hubs. Well, what is a neighborhood hub? It's a retail area in a neighborhood. So, that's coming. I went to the planning meeting out in West Royalty, they're coming. He is an immigrant who lost a son in Syria because a bomb went through a window and killed, and that's why they're here, okay? And he's got, his twin brother has issues. He's trying to open up a business, small business, that's not going to hurt anybody. He's got Princess Auto across the street from him, and he's going to have development all around him. Mike Cassidy, St. Dunstons, and so on. He's got Andrew's Lodge on his border, on the other side, U-Haul, and so on. He wants to open up a small business so that his son will have something, okay? I know of a situation where you approved an auto body shop. I believe it was on Ralston Avenue, Sherwood, okay? They got a developer's agreement. Can we not have some flexibility here? Thank you for talking.
So, thank you very much, Mr. Michael, and I appreciate, and you know, there's lots, I know people are trying to do their best, but right now, what the decisions that have to be made here today are what on our current bylaws are, and not what's coming or what could potentially be in, in the fall. So we have to look at applications based on what our current bylaws are, and, you know, if it, things change in the fall and you want to come back at that point because hubs look different and stuff, we welcome that for sure. Today, we have to vote on an application based on our current bylaws that are in place.
Can we vote on, can you vote on that based upon having a developer's agreement?
That's not the application. What these people are facing tonight is an application to change variance for land-
We won't give that.
So I would suggest maybe having a further conversation with the staff of planning to see if there's other options based on that, but for tonight, the application has to go as stands, unless I'm wrong. Am I wrong in that? Davis?
Through the chair, I'd just like to clarify that the other application that the applicants are referring to on Ralston Avenue, that was a site-specific zoning amendment request, where there was a history of past light industrial use on that site, so there was a pattern of use that informed that decision of council. It was a slightly different situation. Here, home occupations are permitted use for the zoning that the home belongs to, however, it's clearly stated in the zoning bylaw that retail use is prohibited as, as a home occupation. They've come in asking for what would arguably be, you know, a very small scale of retail use, and we have to judge whether or not that's appropriate in that area, whether the impacts, that sets a precedent, and whether the impacts would be too great to the surrounding residential area. So there's a reason historically why the home occupation regulations are written the way they are. The applicants have freely applied for, to ask for relief, and it's up to the Planning Board and Council to judge whether the request is appropriate or not, so.
Thank you, and that's what this board is. It's recommending to council, council will have the final say. So, on the floor is a resolution to not support, or not to accept the variance. So to support staff, would it be say no to this current application that's in front of us right now? Do I have someone that will move? You'll move to support staff, someone to second, it's in. So, right now, the motion on the floor is to support staff recommendation to deny this application. Is there any questions more? We can take a vote. All those in favor to support staff's recommendation?
Just, just, I just would add one thing. It's, the timing is actually coincidental, Rob, here. We just had discussions on our, updating our zoning and development bylaw. There is going to be opportunity for feedback in terms of what our new zoning and development bylaw will look like. We, there, it was clearly stated, and we'd reiterate once again, no decisions have been made on that. So if there is some input that you would like to provide in that next stage of the process to see that it looks differently than what our current one does, because I do agree with the chair, we have to act within what our current bylaw states, and I think our staff acted accordingly within our current bylaw. However, that being said, if you do want to get alternative view or a way, a different way of looking at things, that would be the time to make that information known at that date.
When is that happening?
I don't have the exact dates, I'm not sure on what the exact dates. Michael could probably give a better answer as to when that would be, so I'll defer to him.
Through the chair, it was just discussed at the previous Planning and Heritage Committee meeting, but the, the next round of public engagement will likely be in August of this, this summer, so just, you know, a month away. Work has been ongoing on this project for the past number of months now. I believe the survey is still open on charlotownhall.ca as well, but if you have any questions on that, feel free to reach out through the planning staff, and we'll try and assist you and point you in the right direction.
It's always good to get your thoughts, for sure, as we move forward, okay? And this is, this is just, again, this is recommending to council. Council will have the final vote on Tuesday, tomorrow, I think, or no, Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, I'm sorry, I don't know what day it is. So thank you. So, all those in favor to do that is? Deputy Mayor?
In favor.
Anybody against? No, okay, so that's unanimous. Thank you, and thank you for taking the time to come in tonight. You need to scoot, there's lots, thank you, Paul. So the second application Stephanie is going to present is on 90 Cumberland Street, PID 341461. It's a request for major variance to install a new electronic freestanding sign on the property within an institutional zone.
Of the board, I'll be presenting the final item on the agenda. My first, my application for tonight is a major variance located at 90 Cumberland Street, PID 341461, to allow the installation of two electronic signs located within the required 100-foot buffer of a residential area and a freestanding sign with a reduced The subject property is located on the corner of Grafton Street and Cumberland Street and is surrounded by residential, commercial, and institutional uses. The proposed freestanding sign is, is requesting that the setback be reduced to zero meters and to project into the city right away. If they project into the city right of way, they will be required to enter into a license of occupation agreement with the city. Oops, sorry. This is the site plan, the proposed site plan. The two oversized electronic signs are proposed to be 32 square feet each, which is eight square feet larger than the allowable size outlined in the zoning and development bylaw. A total of 27 letters were circulated to surrounding properties advising of the application and requesting comments and feedback. No comments were received. Staff analysis of the proposal concluded that there were no negative implications as a result of the signs being installed at this location and would allow for Hall &amp; College to advertise their programs and relevant information to boost enrollment numbers, and that is the whole intent of the application. And the Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to council that the following major variance for the subject property addressed as 90 Cumberland Street, PID 341461, be approved to reduce the setback from the front property line for a freestanding sign to zero meters, to allow an electronic sign to be erected within a 30.5-meter, 100-foot radius of residence, and allow the maximum electronic size area to be increased to 32 square feet, which is 2.97 square meters. And that concludes the final presentation of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Are there any questions for Stephanie on this particular application? Do I have someone that would like to put a motion? Motion, move to support staff, seconded by Jackie. Seeing that there's no questions, all those in favor?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, sorry, don't take the vote. Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I just wanted a little bit of clarification, and I, I'm sure I already know the answer, but Stephanie, in her wisdom, will confirm this for me. So this is an application to have an electronic sign, so clearly there'll be no digital, because that does not adhere to our existing bylaw, and when she mentioned it was for advertising of the Hall &amp; College programming, I assume it would also include the programming that they have in their summer festival at the Florence Simmons, and, and I'm sure there's no barriers on what they can put on that. So my two questions are, no barriers on what they put on their digital signage, and the second one, to confirm that it won't be digital. Thank you.
Sure, you can clarify it at the mic really quickly, yep.
I can't speak to the digital, not digital, I can't.
Oh, I need your name.
Yep. There we go. It's Director of Facilities for Hall &amp; College, John Barrett. So essentially, Stephanie did a good job. We met with Stephanie a few times to try to nail out a good, the best location possible for the sign on our campus. A lot of the reason why we're getting the sign is, there's not much presence to know that you're entering Hall &amp; College proper, like the area of the Hall &amp; College is when you come down Grafton Street. So the goal originally was to do it up by our Glenn Denning, our Glenn Denning Hall residents, so when you come kind of from Wendy's there, you'd be like, oh, we're at Hall &amp; College. That didn't work because it's on the corner of Edward Street, so we decided to move it down in front of the Cumberland residence, so we have a green space in between Summit Dental and the 90 Cumberland Street. So that's the place, the, the image she had there, I wasn't sure, I don't think that was actually our property that they had outlined where it looked like there's all these trucks and stuff. It's just a green space with nothing there now. The only building that's within 100 feet of would be our dormitories, and we're, we're going to work with our students, we'll probably dim the sign at nighttime, turn it off after midnight. In terms of the question from Deputy Mayor, I don't believe, there's no intention to advertise for our summer festival. It's purely, the, the goal is to create a presence along Grafton Street for our students as a recruiting tool with a drop in international students, we're trying to promote to domestic students, so we want more islanders to come to Hall &amp; College, as well as promotion for our sports teams or community events. So if the Hurricanes are on a roll, we'll say, go Hurricanes, or that type of thing, rah rah rah. No intention of selling that space to any, any groups or any, any partners. So that's the, ultimately, yeah, a lot of those, we feel like we can mitigate the risk, and as you walked, walked down that, that street, you, the Summit Dental, as well as Washworld have signs at very similar locations as that, what the sign would be, we're proposing, requesting.
Thank you very much. I think there was just the question on the digital, if we found the answer to that?
Oh, hi, sorry. Through the chair. I believe you were asking about, like, digital animation, correct? In the bylaw? Is she on there?
Deputy Mayor?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Yes, so that's prohibited, however, they're allowed to have static images, which I believe that's what this will be, correct? It's just facing, there's no video or animation, and that would be a condition on the approval as well.
Yes, would do whatever- Yes, would do whatever is allowable. We're working through Delmac, so they're the primary group that's kind of pushing this forward, so I did not hear anything about animations on there.
Yeah, go ahead.
Had a question about, is it one sign or two signs, or is it a two-sided sign, or, I heard you say two signs.
Yeah, so it's one freestanding sign, so we're asking permission, for permission for the freestanding sign, because that's proposed as well, and that's the one where I was talking about the reduced setback. The electronic signs would go on either side of it. So it's like, when you're coming down Grafton, going this way, you'll see it on this side. So technically, it's two.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Counselor Beck?
Just to go back to, we approved something similar to this with the Confeder Center, correct? When we allowed for the digital above the main entrance into the Confeder Center, so we do have some, we have made some accommodations with regards to electric signage, electronic signage, and so I think this, I think this would fall similarly. I assume that you would have the ability to change it one day from "Go Hurricanes Go" to "Campus Tour Day" the next, and whatever it may be as your requirement, as long as it's not a visual cascade of lights blaring and flying and that sort of thing.
Yeah, the reason we're having, like, this is coming through here isn't about the sign itself, it's the fact that it's so close to the dorms, like our rules.
Right.
But the dorms are set back, it's in my report as well, but the dorms are set back by three meters, so it won't affect them.
Yeah.
And that's why we're getting, we want to reduce the setback, and there's so much of a buffer between the sidewalk and the road that there's lots of room to put it there, we talked to Public Works already, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
And just to add to that, yes, in talking with Delmac, they approved a 40-square-foot sign for the Confederation Center recently, a digital sign. So we're doing similar to them, and they gave off their recommendations.
Anybody else have anything else they'd like to add before we take this to?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I do, I just comes clarification. We did do a special permission for the Confederation Center to put digital animation on their, on their signage. It's not my understanding that this is the same thing, but if it is, I, maybe I missed something, so could I get that clarification? Because the Confederation Centers was a very different application than this, from my understanding.
Through the chair. There was no request to do animation or video based off of the sign that I see here on, can you go, Jason, can you go back to my slide? I want to go to Slide 5. So this would be the static imaging that we would see there. I don't think there'll be any videos playing, you'd have to have a whole, to me, it's the static imaging, correct?
We can proceed with static, static imaging. I'm unfortunately not super familiar with, marketing is kind of on that side, but we can tell them the constraints that they can work within.
Okay.
I prefer static imaging, I don't like things bouncing around, it's distracting.
If I may? Yeah, just through the chair, just to clarify from the Deputy Mayor's question a little further, in the case of Confederation Center, there was exemption permitted by council to allow for animations, so actually like video moving images, and that was the nuance between what was permitted for Confeder Center versus, that's not what's being considered tonight with this application, just a point of clarification, yeah.
Thank you, David. Are we ready to take this to a vote? All those in favor supporting the variance?
In favor.
Favor, everybody unanimous. Thank you, this will be approved at our next council, or sent on to our council for final decision. So that is our two applications this evening. Is there any introduction of new business? Not seeing any, I need someone to, a motion to adjourn. Moved, seconded, all in favor? Thank you very much, everybody, have a wonderful evening.